Can you do the fact and stuff for tonight?
Um, you have.
I have just one stuff here that's probably overlapping more closely.
Well, I just got the update on Virchery.
Call this meeting in order, all right, for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can you get approval of the agenda?
Mr. Mayor, I just have one addition to the agenda under new business. Just wanted to discuss the craft lot development and the 400 block development and discuss strategies.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
All right.
Second.
One favor say aye.
Aye.
Close, motion carried. Open forum, is there anybody that would like to speak? Okay, consent agenda, approval of amendments, approval of bills and purchase orders, approval of investments, there's a 3-2 temporary offset with the license for Melrose Chamber, there's a resolution appointing election judges for the 2018 state primary, there's one donation, resolution number 2018-27, a donation from the VFW Post 7050, amount of $1,800 towards the purchase of flags for the community, thank you very much, and GEMT appointing. Can we get a motion to approve?
Oh.
Give us a second.
Second.
One favor say aye.
Aye.
Close, motion carried. Presentation. I just want to welcome Jesse Mendorf here, state champion. I got a little information background on you. They didn't give me, I'm not going to read the stuff from in the past, but this season Jesse was undefeated in the 800 and was defeated only once in the 1600, which was at State earning him fourth place. Leading up to State Jesse had a breakout meet at the Melrose invite, the Dave Seaman invitation. He set a new school record in the 1600 with a time of 4:27.87 seconds and was inches closer to the 800 record of 201:51. Another turning point was his section performance in both events. He took first in both and he got state qualifying time in both events. There he set Melrose's record in the 800 at 1:57.34, which gave him the top seat going into the state meet. Jesse had three outstanding races at State. His prelims race and the 800 on Friday locked his spot in the top nine, keeping his first place seat. On Saturday at finals, he started today out with a lifetime best in the 1600 at 4:23.14, breaking his own school record and getting fourth place. And then, one hour later, he raced the 800 to win it while breaking his own school record at a time of 1:56.23. He also has been a dependable member of the 4x400 relay and he was an anchor of the team in every event. This replay was seconds away from also qualifying at State. And also from your coach, Jesse was a hardworking, humble, and passionate athlete. I'm incredibly happy for him and his success. Thanking him so much, you know, just glad that you're here and your coach is sorry couldn't be here or whatever, but I just wanted to say, wow, that's pretty impressive. I could never be a runner. But the city is really proud of you, you know, what you've done for the school district and the community as a whole. We're really proud of you and we really hope now that you graduated, you know, we wish you the best on your new endeavors going in life forward and hopefully you can take first in everything you do. So, I just wondered if we could take a picture with you, I have a certificate of congratulations, just a little gift because last time we had flowers, I didn't think you wanted flowers or anything. So if we could, I'd like to give you an applause and take a picture. Hey, if you want to wear your medals, your cap. We'll hand them off to each other. We'll take a picture.
Straighten the side.
Huh?
Straighten the side.
Hey Jesse, just picture me or pick and running with you.
I have to run a house.
a marathon, so I want to show her how it's done.
Again, thank you very much, really appreciate it.
Congratulations. You're ours.
All right, on to reports. We're going to go first with Tom Buddy, president of the Melrose Chamber. Just want to give us an update on all the festivities coming up in the next week.
Well, thank you for inviting the Chamber up to the meeting today to talk about our big events, which starts off next week, Friday. Couple of things going on Friday, is we have Medallion Hunt starting right away at 8 o'clock in the morning, Crazy Days and a bunch of sidewalk sales are going to be happening in downtown Melrose all day. Start at 5:00 PM, we have petting zoo and pony rides, so something for the little kids. And then we have the Little Miss Melrose again coming back. We got a lot of candidates, I want to say, I think we have eight to 10 candidates this year, so a strong showing of Little Miss Melrose. Something new this year is a chili cook-off. I have been asked to be one of the judges, so this should be an interesting little chili cook-off, which is from 6:30 to 8:30. And then we have the kids' peddle pole and we'll round the night off with Bob, The Bob Show, our famous Bob Me House. And Levi Fellers are playing from 9:00 PM to midnight, so fun activities for Friday. Saturday, we're going to start off, Jesse could probably win this one again, 1K, 5K road walk, and that's at 9:00 AM. Kickball tournament has been canceled due to lack of participation, so local boys are playing from 11:00 AM to 2:00 PM, so the local boys are going to be singing out there again, so come on and support those. And then the afternoon, there's a bunch of kids' rides, bouncy houses, train rides, petting zoo again, bingo, beanbag tournament. Something new this year is a free throw contest for basketball, it'll be over by the playground area, over by the basketball, by the river over there. Pig races, I don't know if we had them last year, but we are bringing the pig races back again. Something new again is the pie eating contest and from what I was told, or excuse me, not pie eating, pie judging contest. Carol is pushing out very hard and she says she meets a lot of people, so let's support this. 3:30, we have duck races, vocal mass at 4:00, and then the parade starts at 6:00 PM. I was told we have almost 20 more floats than last year, so it is growing in popularity. Kids game, and then at 8:30, we have the famous Armadillos coming, so a big band. I keep harassing Mr. Mouse, Chief Mouse, saying that we're going to have close to 3,000 people in town here that night, so I hope they're protected and ready to go, but love to see the following, from anywhere from about 1,000 to 9,000 people, so it's a big band, so we don't forget, you get a lot of people out. This one, we do have a $5 cover charge to get in. And then there's the fireworks, that will cap the night off at 10:00 PM, and then I believe the Armadillos play till like 11:30-ish, somewhere around there. And then Sunday quickly is the church, the community-wide worship service by the Sock, Virch Hill Community Church, and then the Miss Melrose cardation ends at 6:00 PM that night at the high school. Questions?
Yeah, just a question, are you looking for volunteers to help all the?
We are. If anybody is looking to volunteer, get ahold of Sarah Hoffner at the Melrose Chamber office and she will put you in contact with the chairs. As any event, it cannot be, cannot happen without the help and the support of the local community, so anybody that's willing to help and be a part of it is great, so.
And what time is the parade at?
The parade is at 6:00 PM and it goes down the old same way, it starts off by the hospital and goes down Main Street and ends up at the high school, so a little construction down here, but I think we will get around that and be just fine, so.
Just one thing, I did want to publicly thank the Chamber specifically for the school district, the city of Melrose, and Centricare Health are all partnering to do a bicycle pedestrian type event, and so a survey, and so the Chamber has posted a survey on their website to try to get the word out about how people, you know, want to get out and be pedestrians, so again, just want to publicly thank the Chamber for agreeing to put that on your website and help get the word out.
And I believe there will be somebody in town that day as well, at the credit union doing survey information for that as well, so people can, if they don't want to fill it out electronically or in the mail, stop by the credit union and there will be somebody from the Sturz County area to do that survey as well.
All right. Is there any other questions? Looking forward to a lot of fun.
Thank you, guys.
All right, Police Department, monthly report, chief?
Good evening. For May 2018, in our traffic area, we had 36 citations, 177 verbal warnings, and three written. For the month of May 2018, 599 calls or requests for service, last year was 349. We ended 2017 with ICR 1363, and this year we're at 2126. So 250 called requests for service more in May than last year, as well as 763 calls above last year at this time. Some of those numbers are slightly skewed because last year was a very unusual year for us, being down an officer, doing some transition things, whatever else. So we're comparing more of our numbers to 2016, which was a bigger year for us, and we're still ahead of those numbers as well. The officers are out there working, traffic especially, we pulled quite a bit of drug paraphernalia, marijuana. COT was pulled out of a vehicle this week as well by Officer Hager. It's a stimulant used to chew on, kind of like chewing tobacco, that sort of thing, but it's classified drugs, so that was an interesting find that we haven't had for quite a while, so. The officers are out there doing work and that's what we expect them to do. Big part of our citations were driver's license violations, cancellations, suspensions, no driver's licenses in general, and that comes with the traffic stops. Which if it sees schools out, so please everybody be aware of young people walking, biking, those sorts of things to and from events, or just being out and about during the day that we're maybe not used to as well. I'm referencing River Fest. We can handle 3,000, I believe, but let's try not for the night, that wasn't at least on a trial run anyway. But yeah, we're looking forward to River Fest, we got everything we need in place at this point, it's a matter of wait for the people to come down. Any questions?
Three reserve unit, our reserve unit is at zero right now, it is at the, after kind of your retirement.
Are you looking at getting, you know, just regular citizens or more towards people that are in, you know, wanting to school for it?
Both. We have hoped that the general public has interest, whether it's in law enforcement in general or just volunteering in the community, and this would be their way of getting involved. We also do talk with the local students that are going off to maybe a tax school or a four-year degree for law enforcement, so they can get that extra step up on the competition when they get out of school, so at this point we haven't rendered anybody that's in tool of influence, so we talk here and there, and people are interested, definitely willing to look at it.
Definitely somebody you'd want to get into paper at all, as far as, you know, trying to get some publicity for reserves, otherwise you don't hear much about.
Yeah, we could run, run an article of some sort, or just even a little plug here and there, not a bad idea.
Thanks, Carol.
Another thing to talk about on Friday, Carol. Anything else?
Thank you. Planning and zoning commission, any meeting?
Hi. Good evening. I prepared a list of kind of the things that the planning and zoning commission worked on last month. They did several ordinance amendments, the offense ordinance amendment, allowing a zero foot setback when meeting specific criteria, and then the annexation ordinance amendment, which deals with clarifying the initial zoning when a property is annexed into the city. Those are on your regular agenda tonight. What was tabled from the last meeting, it will be brought forward to the next planning commission meeting, is the portable storage ordinance, the mixed-use ordinance, and sign ordinance. There was also a public hearing for the mixed-use conference of plan amendment, which was deemed unnecessary because it did cover it well enough in the existing cop plan language. And then there was an application for Casey's sign that didn't need setbacks, but we learned that they had existing variants, so they didn't need that. The next planning commission meeting, we anticipate Casey's preliminary and final plat, and then the ordinances that were continued from the last meeting. MADA had their meeting and they have recommended modifications of commercial rehab deferred loan program, which is later on your agenda, allowing the improvements to be both on the front, rear, and side façades, as long as they're facing a public street. We've been working with Warrior Boats on a potential new building, $235,000 building. That's about 50% of the size of their existing building that they will be adding, and they're kind of slowly moving forward, so they've asked us not to, not to take any action on it at this time, although the Public Utilities Commission did at their last meeting the request for WAC and SAC waiving of fees and did not feel that it was appropriate to waive those at this point. Proline's been working on adding a conference room, they've got some weird property lines, so they're working through some minor line adjustment revisions. Genial full department for their truck wash building, and Burger King is having some issues with their sewer, so that's everything.
Any questions?
Sure, reports, but a couple of the bigger projects, the charter cable, we're still working on, getting an agreement that we can present to the council for approval. Mike and I have a conference call scheduled with them for next Tuesday or Wednesday. They gave us a proposal and we've given them our proposal and now we're going to try to work it out. The other item is this nuisance enforcement that's coming up next. We will be having a public hearing and then later in your agenda, they only ask to issue some orders to abate, so I would wait to discuss those in more detail when the time comes. Any questions?
Thanks, Scott. All right, it's 6:19, we have a public hearing, public hearing to abate nuisance to the city of Melrose, code section 93.21.
Yeah, we've got two properties, last several years, we've been trying to enforce the city's nuisance ordinance by primarily the police will inspect parts of the city each year and notify people when they're out of compliance. Chief Mouse told them that they were at 68 last year.
Last year we had 170 violations.
So they're, they're coming down, so now this is about the third or fourth time they've went through this and I think it's showing some progress. Of those 68, we've got two that are outstanding yet, and in both cases, they're vehicles that don't have tabs, which is a violation of our ordinance. Tabs are expired, and the way the process works is, I've given a copy of Chief Mouse's report, it's part of this in each case, is that, you know, they go out and the owner is notified of the violation, police department comes back 10 days later, re-inspects, and if they haven't fixed it yet, they get another notice that they have a problem, and the police come back five days later, and if it still hasn't been dealt with, it comes to me officially to the council. So both of these properties have been talked to three times by the police before it got to the council. They also then were personally served with a notice that there would be a hearing tonight on these violations in both cases, the ones needed for the three, first in Southeast and the other 32 Tanny, and say same violation. So they were given notice this hearing, we posted notice here at the city mall, so the people know it's coming. So they've been counting that being served, that's more contacts that they've had. I asked Chief Mouse ahead of two nights, needing to have another look, you know, make sure that, see if anything has changed. He's actually done that twice, before we sent the hearing, he went out and looked, and then again today. And he's got a couple of nice pictures, one of each vehicle that were taken.
This afternoon.
This afternoon. Asked them to the council to look at, showing that for whatever reason, these folks are still not in compliance, so the, although there was a partial, where is that, at 8:23 First Street, Southeast, you know, the two, there was the no tabs and it was also, vehicle was parked up on the front lawn, racks, and so the owner was told to, apparently that's a recent change since we sent the hearing, there's still no tabs, but they opened the vehicle out of the driveway on the front lawn. So if you order the abatement, we would be amending that resolution to remove the allegations that they're parking in front lawn. But we would also ask then, is that by approving the order, we would serve this again on them and give them 30 days to get it cleaned up, and if that doesn't happen, that we would, filed with the Sturz County District Court, then there's something about black rope, you know, where the judge tells someone to do it or else they more often than not do it. If you don't, then the court's order would authorize the city to just abate the nuisance, which in this case would be pull up the vehicle and dispose it. So like I said, I've often wondered, looking at these hearings, if we should get councils some black ropes, that would have more of an impact, but so far Mike doesn't want to spread the word.
You have to wait until court?
30 days.
You can't just cut shavings and tell them to?
We gotta wait. It's, we have to, if it was sitting on the street, I think that would be a different, but on private property, we can't, if shady, go up on their property and take it. So the other item, now today, Chief Mouse was telling you the violation at Tanny, 32 Tanny, the owner indicated that they're in the process of selling it and that they would expect that the vehicle would be gone this weekend. After discussing this with Chief Mouse, I would still ask the council to issue the order, and then we would, you know, we're not going to get them served on these folks probably tomorrow anyways, it could probably be Monday. If the car is gone, great, we just don't serve the order on the property order. If the car is still there, we're not restarting and have it come back next month or August or within several more months. Anything you'd like to add, Chief?
No, and then Scott laid it out very well, and each one of these and several others has numerous other issues or explanations for why things have been done in a timely manner, so I agree with Scott as far as if the issue or the abatement is issued and the vehicle's gone, that's favorable, if not, then at least we're already working towards an end as opposed to starting over again.
And just, you know, I think these orders the council issues are effective. This is actually the fewest we've done since we started, just to have two, and even when we have done more, you know, sometimes we have three, four, five, generally speaking, most of those things have been taken care of. More of the actions had to go to the court order, and we've had two or three that had to go that far, but so even, you know, so your actions do help, but we want to make sure that we have it clear in that this year, expect them to do it or else they'll have the next step. I'd like to say, this is just the hearing, anybody else wants to speak in public, I guess that's for up to the council, any questions? Now would be the time to ask, otherwise this would be coming up later in your agenda.
Does anybody have any questions? All right, it is 6:28. All right, then we're going to go on to action items. League of Minnesota Cities Insurance Board.
Our general liability insurance, recovery insurance goes from May 15th to May 15th for 2018 and 2019. We received our quote a little later, but we're still under the coverage, and the pull for the next year came in at $73,843, which is a slight increase from $70,945. So that premium, we split with the 34% allocated to the general fund and the remaining 66 to the utility fund. So with our coverage, we have a $5,000 deductible and a $15,000 aggregate, so we're just looking for the council to give consideration. The utility commission approved this at their latest meeting.
I'm sure you're right, all the rates are quite a bit higher due to a couple of claims right now, right? You know when that will stop affecting?
It went up about $3,000 from last year, and for the 2017 to 2016, that remained flat, so it's gone up about $3,000 in the last few years.
Workers' comp.
It was workers' comp that had the huge one, and that is a three-year look back, so I'm assuming this is similar too. So we had, our largest claims were from the winter last fall, which we're still waiting on submitting, but otherwise our claims have been really minor for the last couple of years.
Then in the past... Then in the past, the city has chosen option two?
Yes, we've done option two in the past.
If there are no questions or concerns, can I get a motion approved in that way?
No, wait.
Hey, can I get a second?
Second.
Long favor say aye?
Aye.
Close. Motion carried. B ordinance number six twenty-one, twenty eighteen dash one. Ordinance amending zoning ordinance number nineteen eighty-nine dash one dash A, amended adopted by reference. As chapter one fifty-three of Norrals City Code of Section Two Hundred District Use Regulations.
All right, this section of the code pertains to annexations at the zoning that they initially received when the property is annexed into the city. And we've been noticing that not all development that's annexing into the city is appropriate to be in a future development district, which is really geared towards your large lot development that does, or your large lots that don't have sewer and water available anytime soon. And so, we added a provision that would allow us to, in the future, not have to rezone to a future development district, to be able to rezone consistent with the comprehensive plan. And so, that language is proposed for you in the ordinance. Are there any questions?
All right. Can I get a motion to approve? Exchange?
So moved.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Long favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Do we need to have a summary ordinance too?
We do not, it, because summary would have been just as long as the ordinance. The next section is, sorry, go ahead.
Go ahead.
The next section is regarding fencing. And Patty and I noticed some revision, a revision that didn't get made. I think that the wrong version might have gotten included in the packet. Mike, would it be appropriate for us to table this for the next meeting?
Yeah.
I'm just concerned that there's some revisions that weren't in there, which is fine. There's, I don't think there's any time rush. I'd rather do it correctly.
Yeah, staff would then recommend to table the matter until next month.
Long move to table until next month.
All right. Can I get a second?
Second.
Long favor say aye?
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, D for nuisance, nuisance abatement, resolution number twenty eighteen dash twenty-eight.
That's the one that I mentioned at the hearing would need to be, I assume, approved with amendments. And if you look at the first section of the resolution, it recites the first whereas. It cites three nuisances. And the second one is parking and storage vehicles parked or stored in a front yard area. And that has been resolved, so. And then, if you go into the body of the resolution under paragraph one, where you're ordering, uh, one B, that's ordering that, that parking on the front yard is needed. So, in the, what I would recommend is that the resolution be approved as amended by, you know, striking the paragraph number two with the first whereas, same way striking paragraph one B.
All right. Can we get a motion to approve those amendments, please?
Make the motion as amended.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Okay, long favor say aye?
Aye.
Close. Carry. All right. Then we're at the nuisance abatements. Twenty eighteen dash twenty-eight, and it would be the one at eight twenty-three First Street Southeast, Norrals.
That was the one you just.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I had, twenty eighteen dash twenty-nine, thirty-two Tanny Avenue. Can I get a motion to approve that one?
Make the motion.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Long favor say aye?
Aye.
Close. Motion carried. E, resolution number twenty eighteen dash third, resolution approving form of first supplemental venture trust in connection with the outlaying city of Norrals, revenue refunding bonds.
Mr. Mayor, this is a conduit financing project. It's under state statute, which allows a municipality to use their tax exempt status to help specific projects that fall within the state approved improvements, such as large-scale housing developments, sometimes industrial developments. And so, back in, oh gosh, I'm not sure what year, back in nineteen ninety-something, the city entered into a six and a half million dollar principal loan or bond for proliant when they expanded. Excuse, nineteen ninety is the wrong date, but the, for six and a half million dollars. And so, the, there's no obligation on behalf of the city. There's no interest that the city has to pay, just that we are the conduit for that, just like what we do with some of their other financing. So, what they're doing is they're refinancing that debt just like they did in two thousand and fifteen. They're refinancing again, they're getting better interest rates. And so, they're asking the city to approve that and consent to that. And the resolution is as presented here. The closing documents on that would be prepared sometime for late next week. So, the mayor and I would just have to sign those documents to approve it and consent to it. But there's no cost or fees associated to the city. We are strictly the conduit for these projects.
Can I get a motion to approve?
So moved. I'll second.
Long favor say aye?
Aye.
Close. Motion carried. First rate of refusal.
Uh, this is a rather similar thing. EKA, when they entered into a development agreement with the city back originally, when they bought land from the city, we have the first rate of refusal if there's ever a land sale or a property sale. The sale has occurred, there is a pending sale with the current, with the current people that work there. The city staff has looked at this, and it's our recommendation to consent to release our first rate of refusal on this property, unless the city is interested in getting it to the tool and die business. So, having said that, it's staff's recommendation to approve the release of first rate of refusal.
All right. Can I get a motion to approve the release?
So moved.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Long favor say aye?
Aye.
Close. Motion carried. Business, First Street Northeast, Fourth Avenue Northeast Project Update.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, you probably have noticed that the curb and gutter went down on Fourth Avenue. So, within a couple of days, I think probably Monday, they're gonna be look at finishing the gravel and starting to pave that. So, in an effort to meet that June thirtieth deadline. Uh, they're currently working on storm sewer, working from the east up to the west towards Second Avenue. That should be done in two to three days as well. So, uh, we'll be looking pretty good, you know, for street improvements by the end of next week. Hopefully, the curb and gutter will be coming and we may even knock on wood finish a little ahead of time. There have been a few issues with access. Last couple of weeks, we've had the gas company in moving pipes. We've also had electric lines being moved. And I think Arby was in once or twice fixing some broken fiber optics. So, access has been a little bit tough. But I think, you know, at one point or another, I think that people could get in from one of the three access points. So, we did order some additional signage to hopefully help move those signs around. And like tonight, when the Third Street was at least partially blocked here. So, uh, that's all I've got on that one. Do you have any questions?
Mike, there's been a lot of public comments, and actually, I was just talking to a citizen outside here just a little bit ago, about why do you have to dig the hole three times to put in a water pipe, a sewer pipe, and a stormwater? And so, I gave them an answer saying that it's because of dirt, because the sewer is piped on one side of the road, and then they have to dig the pipe, dig it with the dirt to the other side and vice versa.
Yeah, that's exactly right. I mean, uh, we need to have, by state law, we need to have ten feet of separation between the sanitary sewer and the water main, and also ten feet between the water main and the storm sewer. So, we can't put them all down the same trench. It would be a lot quicker, and actually, a little bit cheaper if we did it that way. But state law prohibits, you know, the separation. It's for drinking water, disinfection, and safety, the separation is required. But it does look like they're repeating everything they do several times, so.
Are we good with that part of it? And we're out to Fifth Avenue Bridge Channel Relocation and Rockards Dam.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, the EAW was submitted to the Environmental Quality Board for publication on July eighteenth. There is a thirty-day comment period. I did pass out copies of the EAW. I just wanted to point out one typo on page five. It says about midway down through the first paragraph, it says that, in general, bridges are considered for replacement when the sufficiency rating is below fifty percent. That should be eighty percent. I don't know if it was a typo or just a, uh, thin error. But that will be noted when comments are received. So, the public has thirty days to review, as well as other public agencies, including the DNR and every other, you know, environmental review agency. So, uh, with that, I guess, the city was notified that the LCCMR grant application has moved on to the next phase. Mike Brett Horse will be giving a presentation to the board on Tuesday of next week. We're preparing or helping prepare the presentation. But it's highly unfavorable if consultants show up to the board meeting, so we're not attending with Mike. So, he's kind of on his own on that one.
So, uh, that brings up an idea, is that if there's anyone available from the council that would be willing, and it's nearing the day, it's at one thirty PM down in St. Paul. And I know it's hard for people to get off to attend something like that, but there may be some value if somebody would be able to sit in and maybe help give the presentation, and maybe the public benefit of it or the public input that went into it. I think there may be some value. So, if you're, if anybody could attend from the council, just let me know. I'll be leaving at about ten thirty-ish on Tuesday morning. You'll be back in for the latest.
Uh, and then through conversations with Jody Teig, the Terrence County engineer this week, you're probably aware that the bridge bonding didn't get a lot of funding this year. I think it was five million dollars. And our bridge certainly is not in the top five million throughout the state. So, uh, that would probably eliminate from twenty nineteen construction. But given the funding for the other grants that we're looking for, the LCCMR and the SAMSS Lazard, I think those are twenty twenty, fiscal twenty nineteen through twenty twenty-one. So, uh, that probably would fit better, assuming that we're going to score on one of those grants. Fit better with that funding package anyhow. So, uh, that's all I've got on the bridge, unless you have any questions.
If you take a look in your EAW packet, there's a really nice map, but I'm not, actually Tony, I think you have it there. What number is that? Six, I think, four. Yeah, figure four. It, it just kinda gives you the most current layout of what we're looking at for the full master area now. Far forward, the Rockards Rapids is proposed and the green space and so on. That's, that's a concept sketch, but I, I thought that was a really good representation of what, in the direction of which we've been approved so far.
Is there any other questions? Are we good? All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
New business, uh, we are taking off the fencing, until we have the right information.
Just, just table it till next month.
Move to table?
Huh?
Move to table.
Okay, can I get a second?
Second.
All right. Favorable table, say aye?
Aye.
Commercial Rehabilitation Deferred Loan Program.
Please, sir.
Manna, at their last meeting, um, looked at revising the commercial rehabilitation deferred loan program to allow not only the funds, the five thousand dollars get, that be allowed for not only the front of buildings, but also the side or rear of buildings when they're facing public right of way. So, that's just a minor amendment to that, but it would have a significant impact to a few businesses, I think. Are there any questions?
Can I get a motion to approve those changes? Is this, I'm going to be business still for any, with the front, I mean, how are we gonna, if somebody's front of their building is looking just as bad as the back of the building, but they say, well, we want to clean the back of the building, I'll, like, we want to, I'll have to be cleaned up first because it's on, like, the same street.
The current language doesn't have any of that kind of weighting, nor does it say anything about whether businesses that previously received funding for the front would or would not be able to receive funding for a side or rear if they were on a more than one frontage.
But don't be changing so far, not individually, but, you know. So, there is still a problem, so it's possible.
What was the question, I'm sorry?
It still goes in front of Manna.
Yes.
We discuss where we're, we're probably beneficial.
That's correct.
Can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Favors say aye?
Aye.
Close. Motion carried. C Craft Block Four Hundred Block Development.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I would propose that, if you just, if you wanna just knock out the informational items, and then I would propose that we then close the Craft Block Four Hundred Block Development for, for discussion to the public. So, since we're talking strategy, so the meeting would technically really, that'd be the last item.
Okay.
So, people don't have to stick around.
Can I back up? Sorry, you interrupted. The partial pay voucher for First Street, was that because?
That was, that was approved last month by the council. And so, now the bill actually came through, we can actually.
Okay, I just wanted to double check the Claudia Jones.
Okay.
Thank you.
Information items, utility commission meeting minutes, U.S. Senator Tina Smith's correspondence, CSAH sixty-five sidewalk update, Country Club rower sidewalk update. Is there any questions on that at all?
Yeah, the sidewalk, we anticipate that being installed late next week along Country Club there. The cost is gonna be around eighty-six hundred dollars, we anticipate for that. We got one vote for that for the contractor that's doing most of the work there, so that's good. Next council meeting, we'll put that on the agenda for formal inclusion into the tip agreement, so we can take money out of the tip as it becomes available. Otherwise, that's all we have for really informational items, so.
I did have a quick question. What was the sidewalk update on County Road sixty-five that goes out to?
County Road sixty-five, leading out from the bowling alley out to the new Jenny O'Turkey, is the sidewalk has been currently being looked at designed-wise, where's Gary? Uh, designed-wise by the county. That project is probably occurring in mid-fall realistically because of their timetables. There's a couple of slow driveway issues we need to work through, but the county's facilitating all that with Mike Decker. The other benefit to the utility commission is putting in some additional streetlights, just because there's no street lighting along that sidewalk now. Gary, am I missing anything? So, but.
The county's still doing specs, and they figured by September, it's gonna be all the project. Hopefully, it happens this year.
Are they still redoing the road too? When are they gonna do that, you know?
That's gonna all be part of that project.
The Pemera.
Probably sidewalks and everything first, and then they'll come in and.
Still, this fall, do you think?
Yeah, it's still on the schedule. We're figuring on doing everything from where they left off in Pickville, all the way through up to Napa, through Main Street, up to the, the Minnick Ramp. And then we're gonna do Second Avenue from four oh eight to Casey's, and then also hundred with one sixty-eight from hundred oh thirteen to Thunder Road. Mill and overly and all.
But Gary, do you know the status of the? Gary, do you know the status of the bridge project, the sixty?
The bridge is open.
It's open now, is it? When did it open out?
Two days ago.
Okay. I knew it was going to close.
That's pretty much it. Can I get a motion to close the meeting so we can talk about the Craft Block Three and Four Block Development?
So move.
Give a second.
Give a second.
All favorites say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried.